Hi, John. Oh, you're still on mute.
Hello.
Hi.
You must be Karen?
I am.
Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you, too.
Guess we're the early birds. Well, I guess you have to be.
Yeah, I don't want, you know, I don't want to be the one not ready, so.
Right.
I always get on here pretty soon. They're usually pretty good, though, about getting here on time.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Too nice out today. People were doing stuff.
Yeah, it was nice today. So I'm looking at the agenda. I'm thinking you could be here on all of these.
Oh, I hope not.
Butterfield, HD, probably not the map. Forty Main Street, maybe just, maybe just Butterfield.
Yeah, I didn't really, I haven't really done anything for, prepared for, for Forty Main.
Yeah, yeah. You know, when they talk about Butterfield, and I've not been over there, I'm not that familiar with that area. Is there still a working hospital there?
No, no, they tore it down.
Okay, so it's strictly the condominiums and maybe.
Yeah, there's some medical offices there, but it's all, they tore down all the buildings except for one remained.
Okay.
It was like, wasn't part of the main hospital.
Yeah.
So it's, yeah, the hospital is, is gone.
Okay. Here's Matt. Hi, Matt. Hi.
Hey, Matt, how are you?
Hey, John, how are you?
Good. How's your new year going so far?
So far, so good. How about yours?
Pretty good, crazy.
Yeah.
Just trying to hang in there, going away in a couple of weeks to St. Lucia, so.
Oh, nice. I love St. Lucia.
Yeah, never been.
That's great. Really great.
How's your house? You still have your house any on around Dax?
Yeah, we actually got a second one. My neighbor passed away, and so he was putting his brother was putting his up for sale, and it's really close to ours, so.
Right.
And it needed a lot of work, and so we figured we'd kind of take care of that.
Nice.
It's almost done. Yeah, it looks great, so.
Good.
Thank you. Yeah, and the office was great, helping with the LLC, Shay Humphrey.
Good, good. I'm glad. That's what she does.
Yeah, she's great. She's great to deal with.
Now, everyone's got to have their specialties. It's like doctors. There's no such thing as a general practitioner.
Yeah, exactly, right.
Let's see. Who are we missing? Laura?
We're missing the rest of the board.
We're missing the rest of the board. Jack?
Hi, how are you?
Good, good. How have you been?
I'm doing fine.
Yeah, okay. You go to the office every day or what?
Oh, yeah, yeah. We've been going back to the office every day since, I don't know, July of 2020. We have big space.
Okay.
So everyone can spread out, they either have their own office, or they have their own cubicle.
That's good. Yeah, yeah.
We just moved in like nine months ago. We were supposed to move in like two years ago, but COVID. So we've got all the brand new spaces. It was like an old warehouse.
Oh.
The high ceilings, the brick walls.
Oh, that's great.
So we wanted to use it.
Yes. Yes, especially as a nice space.
Yep. Hi, Stephen, how are you?
I'm fine, John. Who's got the bigger office? You are rich.
Rich by far.
Okay.
He's earned it. Been around the block a little bit longer than me.
I hear you. Rich and I have always enjoyed working with one another. He's, he's, he's just a fine lawyer and a good person.
Yes. Although his office isn't too much bigger than mine, so.
Okay. I was gonna put in a word for you.
That's all right. I'm happy where I'm at.
Good.
So we have two out of, two out of five?
Yeah, I I think somebody wasn't going to be here. I think Yaslin wasn't going to be here.
That's correct. Correct. It was just Yaslin.
Right, so, but, you know, Jack certainly, and Laura supposed to be here.
Yeah, Karen, it looks like the amended site plan link on the current applications on the website doesn't work. It's not a, it's a broken link.
Really?
Yeah.
Oh, boy.
Yeah, it's in blue, but it's a, it's not a hyperlink. It doesn't, it actually doesn't.
Okay, so what do we do about that? Let's see.
Well, at some point, we'll just share it, but obviously it hasn't been, it hasn't been out there.
Yeah, okay. And here comes Jack. Okay.
Hi, everyone. I'm very sorry to keep you all waiting. I apologize.
Okay.
Family. So let me call the meeting to order, please. Matt, hi, we have we have a quorum here tonight. Yaslin will not be joining us as she hoped to be able to. She's.
I mean, okay, sorry.
Do you want me to repeat all of that?
Yes, please.
Okay, so I'm calling the meeting to order at 7:07 PM, a few minutes late due to me. We have a quorum. Yaslin will not be joining us this evening, as she had hoped to be able to, but she will watch this recording and I will fill her in if she has any questions. I want to thank Mr. Barshav and John for being here this evening as we are beginning to drill deeper into the, the application process. As far as chairman's remarks go, I had a brief conversation with Mayor Foley about the possibility of appointing a, an alternate member to the planning board, which is permissible under 213 of the code. And she appears to be open to it unless we poach someone that she has in mind for some other position. So I would like you all to think about that, and if we could have a discussion at the next meeting about the pros and cons of it. Also, I would ask you to begin to think about possible people that we might approach for this position, and I don't want to take up more time with this particular item at the moment, but, but feel free to contact me if you, if you wish to. So moving on, I don't believe we have any members reports. Do we have members reports? None. I think we have no correspondence to, oh, I skipped the minute. You all received and we received back from you comments that were incorporated into the minutes for 114, 113. 113 are for the first meeting by, with Ms. Chair. Pending any further comments to those minutes, I would like a motion to approve the minutes. Could I have an emotion, a motion, please?
I can motion it, but I was there only for one part, so am I legal to do that? No.
It's probably not a great idea.
All right.
Yeah, if you're not there, then you shouldn't.
Okay, well, then I'll need a second. So, all right, so may I make the motion, John, etc.?
We don't, we don't have a quorum to vote on the minutes.
I would just table it, just table it to the next meeting, or if Laura jumps on in the, you know, before the meeting's over.
Okay, Laura was supposed to be here. All right, so we will do as, as, as advised and put it off to the next meeting unless Laura comes in. Another reason why I think I would like to look at this issue of the alternate member. Don't like our business not being able to be done because of the lack of, so. Okay, so if we can move on to the application that we have been discussing for the past two meetings, which is the change of use application for building one on the Butterfield development. Matt, you submitted an amended site plan.
Right.
I wonder if you would just take us through that briefly, please?
Sure. I, I don't know if you can bring it up on the screen. I'm not too savvy with that.
Karen, can you bring it up?
I can try, let me see. Yeah, I'll have to go on the Cold Spring website.
Okay. Give us a verbal while we're.
Okay, sure. So this, this is, this follow, this is kind of a follow-up from what Yasmin and other board members had discussed previously from, you know, their review. And so we went ahead and we prepared a site plan. Building one is a little bit more clearly identified. It's, it's wrapped in some red lineage. And inside the building, it now says retail at the ground floor and six apartment, yes, senior apartment units. Above, you know, previously it had said office retail, so we changed the, the verbiage in there, so it shows our intent. We also identified the parking spaces that we'd like to assign to the apartment units. Let me just scroll down to that, too. That's, you know, it's down, you know, there's a, there's going to be some signage indicated, and I, you know, A indicates the apartment space, you know, A1 through 5, and we assigned two apartment excess spaces also. So those little dots are going to be a typical 12 by 18 sign designation for reserved parking for that unit owner. And we did put the new parking table on the top of the page. It's what you've all been reviewing at the last few meetings, however. Instead of there being 18 excess spaces because of the change, it's 16 now because we, we set aside another two for the apartments. I've identified some outdoor courtyard space. It's the hatched area down in front of the building. It's a large area, that courtyard, and certainly the seniors, of course. You know, there, there's other areas that they have access to, but we wanted to set aside the 5% outside to a designated area, and that area will be reserved for them for, you know, tables and a barbecue and umbrellas and whatnot. Ray Sullivan has also been brought into the loop. He's the architect that's designed the entire project. And he will adhere to the code, and he'll be setting aside 5% indoor space for the seniors as well as everything else that he needs to comply with, you know, as far as the minimum maximum amount of apartments, minimum square footages, et cetera, et cetera. And that's, you know, when that design gets complete, that'll go to the building inspector for them to review and approve and, and verify that we comply. And as we've been saying, the outside, the, the site work, the appearance of the building, the walkways, we have no intent of changing any of that. And then, of course, I hooked Steve Barshav, who's, who's on the call with, with Mr. First, so that they could talk about some of the other items that were discussed at, at the last meeting. And that's it.
Thank you. Are there any questions from any of the members at this point, what Matt's just taken us through? Now, Matthew?
Yeah, do we, what is the main entrance for the retail space? Where is that located?
We don't. Yeah, the retail is down facing Route 9D.
So the walkway right off of the sidewalk is, is would be the main entrance to the retail space?
Yes, and I, you know, if you look at the renderings, you'll actually, there's like a common front courtyard area, and there's, there's a solid walk, but there'll be several doors for retail. I don't recall if it was three or four, but it was, you know, then each retail space has its own door.
So to be, so there'd be separate lobbies for the two uses, right?
Yeah, yeah. And they don't take you, there's no intent of connecting the basement to the upper floors.
Okay, and you do think that, I know your architect hasn't worked on the plan yet, but with a commercial layout, you don't believe you're gonna have to change any of the fenestration to convert it to apartments?
No.
Okay.
Okay. Any, anything else, Matt?
I have a question. So looking at this, your red line outlining the building one, so the apartment entrance will be from the back?
Yes.
Okay.
Right. In the back, you'll see there's an ADA ramp.
Uh huh.
That, I mean, that's always been on the site plan. We didn't add that, but that's that's the entrance for the apartments. They're on the upper two floors.
Right, so there is no connection between the commercial space and the apartments?
Correct.
In other words, is I walk into the shop and then I turn around, I could go upstairs to the apartment? No, no.
No access. No access.
Okay.
And then with that, with that ADA ramp, is there, is there ADA ramp required in the front, or is that on grade?
That's that grade.
Okay. Travel from the parking. Well, I assume the architect's gonna look at the placement location of handicap parking, right? Since obviously this is different now.
Yes, I mean, the handicapped parking is there. And, you know, that could, that could be for an apartment person. I mean, if, if someone in the apartment is a handicap, you know, they could, they could get a space, but that parking could be for the commercial tenants also. But there are other parking spaces off to the right, you know, you know, there are other spaces that would, that could comply with ADA.
And the architect will, the architect will look at that, right? The, the, the assignment and the, the layout of ADA spaces, because it looks, it looks limited to the rear. I mean, that's a long path of travel. You know, if you're coming in the front door, and you need to park in the rear, obviously, it's difficult parking for somebody that has some sort of mobility impairment.
That, 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 that is what was approved, though, on the original plan, you know, so.
Which is, with a different use, right? With a, with a central entrance and a.
No. You know, it was always retail, separate stores, door on the back for the office space.
I think, well, first it was the senior center. I think that's, was, we're building, you know, we're building one was for the drop-off. But, yeah, like I said, the architect can look at that.
I have another question. So the, all the parking spots for the commercial is either on the left or the right, so there is no parking in front of the commercial thing. It's, so people going to the commercial space will have to park on the side and walk from either side to the commercial space.
Yes, again, that's as always, you know, as always the intent. And, and, you know, it's a shared parking scheme here, so you know, you, you could park anywhere.
Right. Yeah, okay. Basically, what I'm saying is there is no parking right in front of the building, so people won't be driving through the street, uh, street right into the.
Correct, yeah.
And then what are the red lines on the right-hand side of the building? There are red lines. Is that a garden, or is that a?
No, that is, there, we're gonna just have some reserved signage for the, for the seniors. We, we, we needed to identify about 450 square feet of outdoor. So most of the buildings, like Building 3 and Building 4, 5, 6, if you go to Building 3 and you look on the outside, there's a little, there's a little area where they have a table, and, you know, and they have, and they have the setup. So similar, similar idea.
With the intent to do some sort of screening or fencing, I mean, obviously, they're sitting at parking spaces.
Well, no, no, Matt, they're actually down in a hole about seven feet. That's a, that's a, that's a, you know, the grade goes up.
Is that right? Yeah, we don't, yeah, do we have any, do we have any elevations on this, or?
Nothing's changed. I can give you, I can reissue the originally approved site plan with all the nothing.
So it is, so it is fairly separated, then. You're, you're saying it's almost a full?
Oh, yeah.
More than a half-story down. Wow.
Yes, yeah.
Well, that should be nice, right?
Yeah.
Sue, anything else on your mind?
No, right now, it's a, it's fine. I was just looking in, in, in general, because, you know, they. No, right now, it's a, it's fine. I was just looking in, in, in general, because, you know, the explanation is answered lots of questions. Because when I was first looking at this, I wasn't really quite sure. Okay, thank you.
And then one more thing. So the, i- i- in the EAF, when, you know, when we, when all the reviews were done by the prior planning board, the, you know, the age restriction is managed by the HOA, the Homeowners Association, because it was, it was, it was, it was, it was approved to be condominium ownership. How does that happen here in a rental? Is it the, is it the managing agent, the landlord? Who actually owns that? Obviously, the village isn't, you know, isn't staffed to do anything like that, nor would we want to engage in it.
I mean, Butterfield, Steve could speak to this maybe a little, but the Butterfield Realty will continue to retain ownership of that building as they do other buildings on the, on the site.
It, it's intended, Matt, that you're going to rent these units, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so then, I, what would happen is, is this would be operated the way that any landlord would operate any rental building. They would be the ones that would be in control of all of the landlord, would be in control of all of the common areas and common facilities.
My question, my question was.
Francisco, I, I think your, your question is. So there's a, there's a declaration that was filed. I don't know, what, it was six years ago when the project was first built, eight years ago, I can't remember now, with the age restriction. So one of the things I kind of noted to myself is I'd like to take a look at that restriction to make sure it covers the entire property, and that restriction runs with the land. And I'm assuming it does, but it's just something I'd like to quickly check, and you know, if we have to amend that declaration to include Building One, if it is so specific, we can do.
If there is a full declaration to be amended, and then it would be the landlord, that would be the one that would.
Whatever residential units on that property in that building, they have to abide by these restrictions.
Yeah.
Yeah, the language was the homeowners association. That's why, obviously, there's gonna need to be some sort of a, but yeah, John, if you could get us a copy of that, just so we could look at it and understand what, you know, what the status of, and where we, and where it would go from here.
No, I had the same note to myself, yes.
Okay, very good.
And I know you guys probably don't want to chase it down, but I do recall in the code, you guys, the, the village made sure that of course, the, the village retained, you know, authority, you know, the, I think it was the building inspector or code enforcement, you know.
If the homeowners association failed to enforce all the.
Right, right, right.
Yeah, it's supposed to be no more than two occupants, one, one at least fifty-five, no children.
Yeah.
So it's fair, it's fairly restrictive. But obviously, the village, we're not staffed to do any of that. So the hope is that, that it's taken care of by the homeowners association. And when John, you know, looks up this declaration, we can have a sense of how it's gonna be managed in an apartment building that doesn't involve the village.
Yep.
Yeah, it would be, Matt, it would be the landlord, this really player that could possibly do it. So the landlord would be obligated, and it would be binding the landlord by virtue of the landlord being the owner of the land.
Right, right. Good, good. Get into that. I assume that was the question, just wanna make sure that we get it straightened out, because obviously, it's not really, it's not really in the approvals now, because it didn't anticipate rental.
Understood.
Oh, I have, just looking at this, I have another thing. Where, where is the driveway from the entrance to the senior apartment? When you, you get in from the enter exit, let's say, from the left of the building. And where do you drive through to go to the back of the, of the building into the apartment? I don't, I don't see any drive-through.
I think you're just, I think you're misreading the crosswalks. Those are, that's the area between these, the two spaces. The aisle across from the apartment parking is another aisle, but that's just, that's the roadway between them.
Okay.
Yeah, if you, you can see that there's a car, actually, that is partly in the crosswalk.
Right, okay, okay. All right, now, it's because this, that seems to be a block of some sort.
Right, right. Now, it's, it's hard to tell the difference, it is. But that's, that's just a crosswalk.
Right, okay, thank you.
Yeah, one other thing, too. Have you, have you given any thought to how you're gonna deal, are you gonna deal with garbage in the same way you were with the resident, the commercial tenants, I assume, or?
Well, this building was set up, you know, for nine thousand square feet of office, and we have two central garbage locations on the site. You know, they're like the, they're the block enclosures with the iron gates. So one of those is just off the corner of Building One, and certainly, six, you know, six people are going, six units are gonna use less trash than than the nine thousand square feet of office space. So anyway, they're gonna, they're not going to have garbage pails and things like that. They're gonna use that garbage enclosure that's right where your pointer is, yes. Yep, you got it.
And that would still, your, your expectation is that would still be private service, right?
Yes, still private, and I'm sure it can handle it, and because the post office actually takes their, their garbage away for security reasons, so.
All right. If we can move on now, could John, and could you and, and Mr. Rushell just sort of give us a summary of the discussions that you've had about remaining steps or the next steps?
Right, so you know, we kind of just focused on the pre-procedures in the process. So there's, you know, there's some steps that the planning board has to, or some boxes that the planning board has to check off. You know, in order to go any further. So the first thing, and I guess I wasn't sure, this needs to be referred to the Ulster County Planning Department under two thirty-nine M. Right off of Route nine D. So I'm not sure, has that been sent to the county yet? Karen or anyone? Jack, you aware?
Yeah.
Okay, so I would say if the board is thinks they have enough information, which, you know, based upon what I've seen, I think everything is there with this revised site plan, the EAF, the application form, and the other supporting documents should be sent over to the Putnam County Planning Department. I'm not sure if Putnam County has a separate form that the municipality has to fill out when they send it over. But you might want to check with Jeff, Karen, to see what he's done in the past, just so to expedite it. So the county has thirty days, they're supposed to look at countywide impacts. They have thirty days to review and provide comments. Sometimes they provide recommendations, sometimes they require mandatory changes. And something like this, I don't anticipate, there's certainly not any countywide impacts, but you never know. It's just a process that you guys have to file under the state statute. So if the board is, is fine with it, I would highly recommend that this gets sent over to the county. You know, as soon as possible tomorrow, you know, early next week, because that'll start the thirty day clock. You've gotta wait thirty days, or if we can get county comments before the thirty days, even better. But we've got to give the county at least thirty days.
Okay. Okay. So that would seem to be the next step. Is there any objection from the other members for us to start that process?
I guess my question would be for John. I mean, how, how complete do the plans need to be for the, you know, so as not to end up in a, you know, in an endless cycle with the county? They may have comments because of the senior center, right? They're, you know, they're, they're in a tenant, they're a tenant there.
The plans that we have before us that I just received, I think, two days ago should be more than enough. I mean, the parking is the big change, and they've got the revised parking table, they've got the designated spots. So I, I think, based upon the, the proposal, the, the plans that I have should be more than enough for the county. If they need more, they'll let you know, but I, I think this is complete enough.
Okay.
All right, then. Do we need a resolution to do this, or can we simply?
Yeah, just, you know, so just, you know, make a note of it, Karen, if you need any help getting it over, let me know. Again, check with Jeff, he's done it before. So if we could try to get it out Monday or Tuesday next week, if not sooner, that'll start the clock.
I'll, I'll speak with him tomorrow. So if that is underway. And we hope maybe that the county will respond more quickly than thirty days. What other steps?
So the next procedural step to think about is, is a public hearing. Now, you have the ability to waive the public hearing under the code. Now, when Butterfield came before us about, maybe it was four or five years ago, when they switched up the Leahy Building and they switched the uses on that site plan amendment, the planning board did decide to waive the public hearing in that instance. And so you have complete discretion, you know, to waive it if you want to waive it. It's a pretty minor change. It's all within the confines of the existing, of the prior approval. It's really, you know, the parking table, which is significantly less the parking numbers. But in any event, that's, that's the planning board's call as far as whether they want to waive the need for a public hearing.
Matt, what was the thinking at the time about the, the public hearing?
That's to me.
Yeah, I'm sorry, Matt.
The, the, well, I mean, those were two commercial uses, that it was really just a change of locus of use, right? That you're, you know, you're basically taking the senior center and moving it from Building Two and moving it to Leahy. Leahy hadn't been counted, the parking hadn't been counted because it was carved out, it was, it was determined to be sufficient. So it wasn't real, the parking calculations were, were not added into the shared table directly. But, so the thinking out of, on a way, it was basically just that people weren't really, it wasn't really in, you know, there are, the only person you are noticing are the owners of the building, right? You know, and which is all the same, you know, the same entity at that point. So who really needs to have a voice at the hearing? What I think is different here is that you now have condominium owners that bought into, you know, a mixed-use plan that now have, have a significant change, that they may want to have a voice. I would think this board should hear them. I don't really, I think in the other case, it really, who is there to hear, right? You have Butterfield Realty all the way around. There are no occupants of the condos, they hadn't been built at that time. So that's the difference to me, is really that, you know, with the condominium owners, I think if it was a commercial use, flipping for a commercial use again, I think it's, you know, what is the difference? It's, it's a mixed-use site. You know, we, we heard from a couple of the condo owners, right, who clearly.
Yeah, we heard from you.
Yeah, went to the, you know, went to the trouble to, you know, to state their support for it. So I think it's important to, I would think, to gather that information. It's very quick. I mean, it, you know, you got, you send out a green card, in two weeks, we have the hearing, and you know, I mean, before we hear back from the county or the count, you know, time clock runs out.
Right, so if you hold a public hearing, it's not gonna hold anything on.
Right. I, I, that's, that's, that's where I see a clear distinction in my mind, you know, because, look, when we, when we run into issues here, it's almost always because people didn't talk early enough, right? When it's neighbors and homeowners. And so now you have homeowners, right? These are people that are, you know, that are fee simple homeowners, right adjacent to the property, right? Look, early indications are they, they like the change? That's two out of forty-nine.
In, in your opinion, and you too, Sue, if there were a resolution from condo board, if that's the only affected class of people, you think that would obviate the need for a public hearing?
Was that to Sue, or was that to me?
Both.
Both.
The, the problem with that is, it, it could take you months to get a resolution from the condo board to wait to whether we want to hold a public hearing. You might be better off just holding the public hearing, it'll probably be quicker and less painful to go to the.
We've got a prescribed process that's undocumented. I mean, we kind of had that little kind of where one of the board members said, on behalf of the board, we all support this, and when I questioned that, she said, oh, no, it's just me and somebody else.
That, that's not an issue. I questioned it as, as well, that she was only representing herself.
Right, right. So I think that, I think it would just be best to just kind of leave it to the normal process of notifying all the owners. They're all, they all have, they all have accurate notice, right? They all have legal notice under our code with getting the green card, right? And they all know that the public hearing is happening. There's a public hearing poster posted in front of the, you know, the, the site location to let people know in case anybody else has any interest. So, yeah, and I, I would not say that one substitute, it's a substitute for a public hearing.
Okay. And John, the the call on the HDRB is the building department's call, right?
Correct. And I don't believe a referral said anything about HDRB, and I don't believe any of the exterior is changing, so.
I had asked her, I had asked her to change that. Matt had met with her and said they're not gonna make any changes. And I said, well, if that's the case, then let's get an updated referral that removes the HDRB from the referral, right? That was my question tonight, is let's, let's, let's make sure that we're really, you know, thinking that all the way through with respect to the fenestration, you know, the windows and doors. You know, I mean, the rhythm of a, of an office space you would think would be greatly different from, you know, you know, apartments, you know, kitchen windows, bathroom windows. But, you know, Matt is representing, you know, for the applicant that there, there will be no change, because there can't be any change where it needs to be reviewed by the HDRB. So we obviously take them at their word, that's what they're saying.
Right, and that would, you know, if it comes down to it, that could be a condition of the approval would be, you know, any exterior changes would require HDRB review, and that's up to the building inspector when she's looking at the, you know, the detailed plans. You know, and I'm sure when Butterfield gets to the detailed plans, they're saying, no, we're not changing anything now, but I wouldn't be shocked if something had to change, and it's no fault of theirs, it's just, you know, the architect sat down and took a hard look. At that point, if, if, when that point comes, you know, then, then the building inspector would refer to the HDRB.
Yeah, so maybe when you do the conditions of the whereas statements, John, of the resolution, you reference the dated plans of the stamped and approved HDRB documents.
Yeah, okay. So, all right, so I think for the next phase of this process, the steps to be taken, I, I'd like to, I'd like to speak with Yaslin and Lara about the public hearing issue, just to make sure that we're all on board.
Yeah, can I, can I make a suggestion, if you don't mind in that regard?
I don't.
Okay, so I think if the sense is among the board members that are here to have a public hearing, I don't think that any of the other planning board members would, would raise up their fists and say, no, we don't want a public hearing. My concern is not so much that there is a public hearing, but that in terms of the timing, we try to, as, as Matt was saying, try to get these things so that they're in sync with the county's review. So my thought was, if we're gonna do it, let's set it up tonight so that we know what the timetable is. It can be dovetailed with the two thirty-nine review, and, and then we have a, a time schedule which, which works.
Okay.
Right, because otherwise, otherwise, we'd have to wait till the next meeting to then hear what Lara, what Lara and Sue.
I, I was simply going to. Individual, that's all, but.
Right, now, we'd have to have a motion, right?
If you all are comfortable with it, then let's have a motion.
For the second.
Okay, you're setting the public hearing for what state?
So when do we think we'll be ready, though? That's a good point.
It's a requirement to.
We use two weeks in the newspaper.
So you probably need the month, so the first meeting in, in March?
Correct.
So.
So motion to, what's that?
March ten.
Yeah, a motion to approve, a motion to approve a, and hold a public hearing for this application on March ten. And publish the same in the newspaper. Obviously, John will do the legal notice, and we'll get that out.
Sue, second from you?
Yes.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
As, as unanimous, okay.
Oops, sorry, Matt.
Go ahead. Obviously, just to make sure you get the poster from the clerk, you gotta put, we now have the poster notice. Obviously, just to make sure you get the poster from the clerk, you got to put, we now have the poster notice, we didn't have that when you did everything else.
Okay. And so we we can do the meeting before you get back the county referral, we would just have to incorporate. Their comments. You know, because the referral, you said they have up to thirty days, so.
Yeah, Matt, okay. Yeah, so what we'll do is we'll call, I mean, honestly, Matt, if you have any contacts or Mr. Valero. I don't mind, you can make a phone call to the county. I have no problem you guys calling, we'll try to call, but I can't guarantee you will remember or. As an applicant, I I I have no problems if you guys want to call the county a week before and say, hey, what's going on with that, you know, referral vote.
Okay.
Yeah, and Matt typically, you know, you can call up and even say, listen, if you have any questions, you want any additional information. That's that's always can, that can be helpful to planning staff.
Okay. Okay.
I guess, does anybody have Matt, Matt or anyone, any, while we have Steve available, you know, is is there any? Other questions that, you know? There's one, there's only one other thing that John and I discussed, which was Seeker. So John, did you want to go into that?
That was the last, that was the last topic.
Yeah.
Procedurally. So. Under the State Environmental Quality Review Act. I'm not sure if this is a type two action, which would be exempt. Or at worst, it's an unlisted action. It doesn't fall neatly in a type two. And so when you have a type two action, that means it's not subject to any further environmental review. I kind of like to err on the side of caution. I'd rather have some secret than no secret. If it doesn't fit. Perfectly on a type two, I usually try to classify it as an unlisted. Obviously, given the change, which is you're actually removing nine thousand square feet. Of commercial space and replacing it with six units that were already. Contemplated when, you know, the original secret documents were reviewed six, seven years ago. You know, so certainly I think this is really just kind of going through the motions and in issuing a negative declaration, but I don't see. How this would ever trigger a positive declaration. So I would rather err on the side of caution since it's not really. A hundred percent clear that it's a type two action. And my recommendation is that it's an unlisted action. But again, it's it's gonna be a neg deck. I'm just gonna be honest. You know, there's no way this would be a positive.
Right, and and John, I, as you know, I saw it the exact same way, and I also. Would err on the side of caution here. There's no reason. To try to squeeze this into a type two. When you're doing an amended site plan, I'm almost always see that as an unlisted action. So I I concur with your analysis there. I also obviously don't see any possible. A new significant adverse environmental impact, so I think it ultimately will be a neg deck. I I I'm assuming that from what's been discussed up to now. That there has been no resolution for the board to declare itself lead agency on this matter.
No, there's no written resolution, so they can certainly do that tonight verbally. And then I can incorporate that in the whereas clauses for any, if, you know, for any approval resolutions, so we have a record. So. So it is an unlisted action, so that procedurally, the board would first have to. Declare itself lead agency, which it is anyway, because I don't think there's any other outside agencies approvals.
There's no involved agencies.
Would be to classify it as an unlisted action.
That makes sense.
That was breaking up just a little bit for me, John. We're declaring ourselves the lead agency.
Correct.
Well, because we're the only one. I mean, there are no other involved agencies, so therefore, by default, you're the lead agency.
Correct, but if, you know, we can.
But if the HDRB does come in, they'd be an involved agency, if there is some sort of.
Right, correct. But and if for some reason the it's an HDRB comes in after your neg deck, that's fine, because it's an unlisted action. And they can do one coordinated review and, you know, that's the. The applicant kind of proceeds at their own risk. With respect to that, so.
You're you're saying segment?
No, no, not segment. I'm just saying if for some reason in two months, three months from now, the HDRB.
Oh.
All of a sudden has to issue approvals, that doesn't nullify or impact this board's negative declaration.
That's right.
But not part of this work. It's not a segment. It's actually just a, it's something that it presents itself later.
They call it uncoordinated review.
Yep, got it.
It's perfectly legal with an unlisted action. And it's quite common because, you know, a lot of times you don't know, especially with an HDRB, till you get into the details. Whether anything is further, any further approvals are needed.
Okay, so we need then a resolution from the board tonight, John.
Yeah, you guys can just pass a verbal resolution and I'll incorporate it into the whereas clauses if we get to an approval.
Matt, Matthew, you wanna?
Yes, so we're. The motion is for all of it, right, to obviously we declare as lead agency because there are no other involved agencies with respect to Seeker. We we. We are classifying the action as an unlisted action. Right, which would require the long form EAF.
It's a short form's fine.
Short? Oh, really?
Yep. Which we have already.
Oh, okay. Um. Was it, there was a third piece, right?
That's it for now.
That's it, yeah, okay. That's the motion.
Thank you, Matthew. You're seconding, Sue?
Yes.
Okay. Are there any questions, Sue?
Uh, no, I. I don't have much knowledge about this, but I think the secret. Thing is important because there is a change. So therefore, I I I do support this, you know, for for them to to look further into the environmental thing. It is important for the village and. I think as apartment compared to commercial. The usage is different, the output. Whatever they have from their kitchen or something is different from a a commercial spaces, so therefore. A a look into it would would be helpful. That's that's my thing.
All right, well, thank you. So if we can take this resolution to a vote, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, passed unanimously. So thank you all. Gentlemen and ladies on this issue. I'll speak with Jeff tomorrow about the process for. Sending the materials to the county. And make sure that the process for announcing the of a hearing. Is set underway and we will. See what we see.
Right? Okay. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, bye.
Thank you all. Good night.
Jack, I'm good, right? I can sign off?
Yes, you can sign off. Thank you, gentlemen.
Really appreciate it.
Good seeing you.
Have a good day.
For the board members, I just want to report that. I did make my report and thank you for your comments, Matt.
Yes, I am a stickler on the public record because it will, it will always. It will always be used.
I understand, yeah. Really.
Okay, good, good.
It was appreciated, so. I did make the report to the trustees last night and I did share with them. Our concerns regarding the remapping and. I think with the cooperation of the HDRB, the outline, the boundaries of the national register district are going to be. Re. Are going to be included in the new map in, so. That matter is 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 settled. I did attend at. The mayor's invitation, a meeting with. John, is it John Gary? Of forty main.
Forty main, right.
Yeah. On Tuesday, I believe, and. Which was a face to face and they are now seriously. In the negotiation phase for the. Possible solution to the parking issue of forty main. Be. I'm now working from memory, but the previous comments from from the planning board. About the approval of the six or seven waivers for the. Parking seems not to be an issue. But the terms of the agreement between the village and. Gary's company. Are yet to be finalized and there were some lively conversations about that. So I just wanted to brief you that there had been a commute, a parent communications gap between the parties. Which has been closed. And so I think. I'll keep you informed as as proceed. Okay.
Okay.
All right, so we still, I guess we'll just put off the minutes approval until next meeting.
Well, I have a question. It's a, it's, it's. Are we supposed to look at the? Plan, the floor plan or not the site plan, but the the plan in general of these apartments to be built? At all, or it's not our job? For the for the Butterfield thing, that's a. I I I'm not certain there. You know, we know the change of the usage, but is there a specific plan we need to look at? What kind of things they're going to build or is there a? You know, where the windows are and so are we supposed to look at those at all?
At this point, I think what we're talking about are representations by the developer. That their architect will. Conform to all of the codes and standards for senior housing. And that will be a representation to the buildings department who can or can, you know, enforce or not. Matt, what's your feeling about our getting involved in internal design?
Well, I think it wouldn't be a bad idea for them even to, even in their own best interest, is to make sure that they can use the existing fenetration. Fenestration, that's going to be incredibly challenging. And that's going to, you know, if you, if somebody's got to put pen to paper anyway and start drawing this, right? I think it would be good to see that they fit in there to show that there, we also should. I I think, I think one thing that we also need to see are these entrances and how they work, you know, like we saw the ADA ramp in the back. You have the longest path of travel.
Yeah.
Or an AD, I think they, I think we do need to see not a lot of detail on the interiors. You know, where they put the six and what shape they are. I don't, we didn't even really see, you know, full detail on the fifty five. Right, but it's important that they at least show us that, but those were all single use buildings. This is a multi-tenant building that are two different, very different uses. So for example, as you saw, there's only handicap parking space in the back, the farthest from the entrance, that's that's not going to work, right? The the that's up to the architect. And again, it's a code enforcement issue, but I think for us. Since, you know, planning boards at a very high level look at, you know, at general safety and, you know, and traffic flows and all that at a very high level. That it would be good to at least see, you know, kind of a block plan. Blocks basically just being colors or blocks on the plan to say that, you know, here is the. Here is the apartment, the rental apartment entrance, right? Which is going to have, you know, post office boxes and all that. Here's where the five hundred square feet for community space is going to be. You know, up here, I didn't, I wasn't even aware what they were showing. Obviously, when you look at it from a bird's eye view, the exterior space looks like it's. You know, right up against the, you know, bumpers of cars, but he says it's a, it's a, it's a. It's a sunken, it's a sunken, no, no, it's sunken. Because that that's not built yet. That's all behind a fence. Nobody's seen that. It doesn't exist yet.
Right.
Right, so it's going to be sunken, probably because of the the drainage on the other side of that. So I think that.
The grade, so.
Yeah, I think I I think at least a block plan. To show the use of the space that where the commercial enters. Where the parking is, obviously, the licensed architect goes on record and on their license. That, you know, that the handicap spaces are, you know, are appropriately laid out. We remember, you know, it looks like the the most adjacent spaces to retail are the. Eight spaces that are back in only, right?
But but I I think that refers to visits to the construction site, Matt.
How do you mean?
It says visitors to the site back in, so I I don't think that that's.
Oh, that's temporary?
Yeah.
Well, that's what we've asked, right? We've asked what that is, right? And we haven't gotten an answer.
I I went up there again to take a look and it. I'll confirm that, but it it it's temporary, I believe, and it's part of the construction fencing, so. But I will confirm that. I'll also have a conversation with them about supplying us with some. More graphic in information about what you two are raising. But I I do want to, as you know, on advice, on John's advice. I think we can move ahead and send what we've got to the county to get that started.
The county, yeah, the county won't need to look at that stuff. The only thing I can think the county would get involved, you know, because like I said, the county is the senior center over there.
Yeah.
You know, so they're using the site actively, so they'll, they will take a look at this one. Typically, they just get bounced back to us in five minutes if somebody makes a phone call. This one might be a little bit longer, but I they're they're so far apart on the site, I can't imagine that they could foresee any issue. But obviously, you know, taking shared parking and turning it into reserved parking, if it was over by them. They 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 probably have comment, but it's so far away. And the senior center, we haven't seen the senior center fully operational yet. Right, because of COVID. So we don't really know what that's going to look like.
I did have no period of being.
I don't believe so. No, I don't believe so.
Okay.
You know, so and right now, and you know, and also too, even when they do open up fully, it's not really clear that people are comfortable to go yet, right?
Yeah.
So.
Okay, well, thank you all. I'm not looking at the agenda. Are we?
It's just a a motion to adjourn if we're done.
Okay, then. Motion to adjourn from Sue, please. Thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you.
Good night, have a good night.
Karen, thank you very much for your assistance tonight.
Take care, everybody.
Good night.
Okay, also, let me remind you, Karen had sent us a draft minutes from the. January, the January twenty seventh meeting, I believe it is. Which we will want to take up at our next meeting of this month. So if you would do the same, go through the same process, make whatever. Changes you feel are appropriate and send them to her, then we'll we'll send out a. A revised copy, okay?
Okay.
Very good, good night.
Thanks. Good night.
Laura? Hi. Can you unmute? Yeah. Can you unmute? Unmute, hi.
We just ended.
Okay, I'm really sorry. I I had received a call about, I just emailed everyone just the health situation, so I.
Oh, okay.
So. Yeah, I will, I'll I'll talk to Jack about it.
Okay, all right.
Sorry about that, take care.
Okay, take care, have a good night.
Bye bye.
Bye.